Other attendees, next would be Ms. Kaplan.
Yeah, Kaplan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus.
Kim Kutsaratus here.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings.
Susan Cummings here.
Great, Mr. Shannon.
Ed Shannon here.
Okay. Okay, I see our Solicitor Frank Dillon.
Present.
Thank you. I see our zoning officer, Mike Catalia.
Here.
Thank you. I see Parks and Recreation Director Matt Gilbert.
I'm here, Chairman.
Thank you. And I see Public Works Director Mark McDonald.
I'm here.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone?
Joe Galdo.
Township Manager, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's no problem.
Township Manager Joe Galdo.
Probably the chief's on, but I'm just looking for his icon.
Okay, Chief Krimmel.
It seems to be so far.
Okay.
Is there anybody we didn't get?
Anyone that I missed?
Ryan, Ryan Smith.
Fire Marshal Ryan Smith, interim Fire Marshal.
I'm here.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else that we skipped over?
Carl, turn this. Hey, Carl.
Hey.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to begin. So Peter, if you could begin recording, we'll start recording the work session.
Well, we'll start off what I was gonna do is roll out Mike Catalia, who's the new zoning head, and let him give you a quick synopsis on what he's done in this past week here at the township. Mike, do you wanna go ahead?
Sure, thanks, Joe. Thanks for having me. It's great to be in Lower Southampton, kinda getting things rolling. It's been an interesting eight days, I can tell you that much. Got a lot of things going on, a lot of processes, cleaning things up. Basically, what I did is got the workflows moving. My goal is to keep the township overhead as low as possible with administrative staff time, unnecessary duplication and paperworks. With the help of Joe, Pete, and Chris, we got all the permit forms updated for the most part to an online application, so residents can now remit their permit applications online and email them right in. We are starting to go through the outstanding saldo and zoning hearing board applications that might be hanging out there from leftover from before. Working a lot with the residents, got most of the website updated with the phone numbers, so people have direct access to my office and the staff. We got email addresses out there. The goal is obviously to keep the counter visits down and trying to get them on the phone or via email. So less questions, the better we are. Handling some outstanding issues within the township, but everybody's been pretty responsive. We're meeting with Carl and the group from Tri-State tomorrow to go over engineering stuff and kinda streamline that process as well, as we have a couple new applications coming in as well that we need to get moving. So you'll be seeing some emails from me in reference to those topics. But all the staff in the township building have been nothing but helpful. Everything's moving like a well-oiled machine right now. Hopefully, it stays on those tracks and we don't get derailed. So, but things are pushing ahead and nothing but good things can come out of it.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it. Um, did anybody have any?
I sent an email.
Good, Frank.
I sent an email to Mike this afternoon thanking him for the ways getting things moving. It's really great to see.
We've even received a couple emails via residents that basically thanked Mike for moving the permits along, you know, making comments like they haven't received permits like that quick in such a fast manner before. So Mike has been a welcome addition in this short timeframe. So we're gonna just basically go down the various directors. I'm gonna go with Mark up next. Mark, if you wanna talk about the sewer policy as well as the awarding of the road paving program, and I guess we're gonna need the approval or emotion tonight for the award and the emotion to sign off on any type of contracts with that. But again, Mark.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, everybody. Uh, here we go. The three bids were received from on 10 bid, and we have James D. Morrissey, $422,452.95, General Ashfall Paving, $625,289.24, and Earl Ashfall Company, $626,113.13. So we have a roughly $203,000 difference between Morrissey and General Ashfall. So this is a pretty good number by my estimation, and hopefully, if the numbers come back good, I wanna add two more streets onto this. That would be Old Street Road, from Street Road down to Philmont Avenue, and Steel Road from West Pine Street to Hampton Drive. And Hampton Drive is getting done on this list already, so that would just make sense to do that because it connects right into it. So I would suggest, I would advise that we award it to Morrissey tonight.
Mark, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
A question? The numbers that you gave us are slightly higher than the numbers that were quoted, and I believe it has something to do with the additional storm sewer work that has to go in on Rosewood Avenue, is that correct?
That's correct. This is with that included. If you take that off, Morrissey's price is $353,994. And then the next one is $549,000. So almost $200,000 difference there also. But that's what the storm work, there's been a standing water around Second and Rosewood for many years. It's been a problem. So, but these prices are good enough now, I guess because of low oil prices. By two minutes, materials are low, but this is a good opportunity to get this done and even add a couple more streets on, hopefully, and that'll be about 20 streets we can get done this year.
Great.
Mark, I have a question. Um, that huge difference in the bids, is that unusual?
I'm sorry, Deb, could you say that again?
The huge difference, Morrissey compared to the other two bids, and they see they got same information. I was just curious.
I believe usually whoever owns their own asphalt plant, the blacktop plant, they can get much better prices because General Ashfall doesn't own their own plant. They have to buy the asphalt from either Glasgow, Morrissey, Tony DePaul, whoever owns it. So I know Morrissey's a big company and I'm pretty sure they own their own plant. So that's, they're making money hand over fist either way.
Hey, Mark, it's Matt. I don't mean to interrupt you, but is anyone else getting like a background noise?
Yeah, I think if you're not talking, to mute, to kinda mute your phone or your computer if you're not talking.
It's really loud. It's hard to hear you, but thank you for going and getting those quotes.
There goes Matt cutting in again.
Okay. Can I talk about the sewer policy real quick here?
Yes, sir.
This is what I have posted down the public works yard. This is how I want the men to handle the sewers. I'm just gonna read it, pretty brief. "We respond to every sewer call and immediately check if our main line is running clear. If the blockage is in the residence lateral, they are to be told to call a plumber for drain cleaning service. The owner was responsible to maintain their sewer lateral from the house to the township sewer main. Public Works crews are not to plunge any residence lateral. If a plumber or drain cleaning service clears a residence lateral, public works crews are to return within a reasonable amount of time and check and/or jet our main line. This will be the next scheduled workday unless directed otherwise. If there is any sewage overflow on the ground or damage to a resident's home occurs, public works crews are to take pictures with digital camera or cellphone. Pictures are to be sent to both the Public Works Director and Secretary. If a resident wishes to submit an insurance claim, they need to be instructed to submit pictures and all contact information to the Public Works Director and Secretary. And lastly, sewer backup reports must be completed and handed in as always." Now, something else to say about this. I looked through the ordinances and I don't see anything in there about the resident or business owner, the building owner, being responsible for their own sewer lateral to the main. So that's not a bad idea to have that in there.
Well, since it's on their property, aren't they responsible as a rule anyhow?
I believe so. Yes, they are responsible, yes.
And Mark, wasn't it kind of like an unwritten policy that Public Works would go out and plunge those vent pipes just as a favor to the residents?
It's a nice thing to do for them, but it opens us up for liability purposes. If they plunge it and something goes in, somebody gets damaged inside their house, we're liable.
Yeah, that's not a good policy, right? As Mark said, if you cause a problem and if you clean up and you don't do it right, you just end up with more headaches. I mean, if they have an action against us, they have an action against us, but for us to get involved in doing the work is just gonna cause too many problems. And that's the general policy of the authorities that I'm aware of.
No, no, I agree with you. I wholeheartedly agree. I just wonder if some residents are going to expect us to come out. Maybe we publicize that somehow, you know, that we have a new policy moving forward, so, you know, we can avoid any type of flare-ups when they call on a Saturday night at nine o'clock and expect us to come out and plunge their vent pipe.
We could do that.
And this is Mike Catalia. I just have one other question with that. When we do the residential, I haven't gotten to this part yet, but the residential resale UNOs and the commercial UNOs, are we requiring them to do a sewer lateral inspection to look for any roots, infiltration, collapsed mains, or anything like that?
That was kinda the thing that we spoke about at our last meeting with Joe Nolan. So that may have to be done by an ordinance and something that the board would have to pass. If you're gonna do a resale or a resale of a property, like existing properties, let's say from one to ten years old, you may not have to do that type of thing because the pipes are good. But if the pipes are old, we may have to do that in a future ordinance.
Yeah, that's something we should look into, Bert.
A lot of municipalities require, when you sell the house, to fix the sidewalks, to, you know, do all the property code maintenance work for resale. That helps improve things. So people don't like it, but it's better for municipality.
Correct.
So, okay. Mike, you had a seven o'clock meeting, Mike. If you wanted to cut out, Mike, you can certainly do so, sir.
I'm good. I have another 15 minutes. We're good. I'm thoroughly entertained. Thanks.
No problem. Mark, did you have anything else, or if there was any other comments on the sewer backup policy?
No, that's all, Joe.
Okay, all right. So Chief, are you there? Not yet. Okay, not a problem. Ryan, did you wanna talk on a couple issues?
Sure, the food drive is still going strong. We have a lot of residents still donating daily. Fire inspections, getting into a lot of them with no issues. And we did 100 apartment inspections the other day down on Stump Road at Huntington Woods. And fire calls, everything seemed to calm down, just running a lot of alarm systems now.
That's good. Thanks, Ryan. That's good.
Thank you.
All right, I see the chief popped on. Chief, did you wanna go over any comments or make any comments with regard to, I guess, manpower issues, anything else going on? I'm actually gonna speak at the manager's report on moving forward with the two surveillance systems. So I'll mention that briefly too later on, chief, for you, so we could get that approved for you tonight, and you could get the work started on those two, being the Dolphin and the Play Wiki Farm. Get that bull rolling too. So, yeah, chief.
I don't have much. Manpower's good, although being in reserves and Irene being laid off, but overtime is manageable. Everything's good.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm gonna wait for Matt because Matt will probably take us to 7:30. I'm gonna go with two issues, basically. We spoke already about the awarding of the road paving program, so we would need a motion for the award tonight and a motion to sign off on any type of contracts. The second issue is that in dealing with the two surveillance systems that are RDA grants, they're part of the RDA program, we received, the police received three quotes. One through Video Technologies, I think it is Video Technologies, hold on. Video Technologies at $13,481. We received another one from Practical Tech Consulting. They were around $18,596. And then lastly, Excel Communications, they came in at $15,951. So tonight, we would be asking for the, I guess, to move to award Video Technologies, the two small contracts, and sign off on any necessary documents for that. And we only needed, since it was below the threshold, we only needed three quotes. We got three quotes, so we'll be moving on that. And that's basically all that I have right now myself. Deb, Matt, you wanna go over your issues?
Thanks, Joe, and thanks to the rest of the board. One quick thing, I know it's coming down the pike. Chief, while you're on here, I'd already sent you an email regarding the Fritz Park and Mallard Road parking issues during baseball season. I've already been told that there's gonna be a public comment on that, so I'm gonna defer to you with that one, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, everyone and the user groups are looking forward to the going green phase. We're looking forward to being able to service more residents in our parks and allow things like public restrooms to open and the rest of the parks to be restored. We're looking forward to a lot of user groups being in the park frequently, but we also have to be mindful of the guidelines, especially with our applications are the public restrooms. I currently have a proposal out for a seven-day-a-week daily sanitation with upkeep on sanitation while we use those restrooms during the green phase. Please keep in mind that green does not just go back to normal. Everybody there?
Yep.
Item agenda number two is going to be the race, the Travis Manning 9/11 Heroes Run. We've been doing it for eight years now. We're looking forward to it on September 12th, but please keep in mind, if this approval goes through and it is unsafe to do so on September 12th, we will not proceed with this race. The Travis Manning Foundation already has a virtual contingency that we would still be able to do the race. We would host this speech to the residents. It would just be done virtually. Everyone would log their own times. All the social distancing wouldn't have any use of the park. But what I would like to do tonight is get approval for the park in the event that we can do that race and we can facilitate it safely with the guidelines and social distancing and move forward. That would be on September 12th. That's agenda item number two. And that also includes the temporary closure of the roads in the Buck Ridge Farms area, and during the motion, I can list those road names.
So Mark, Matt, we could make that approval conditional upon your recommendation or make it conditional upon your approval, because we've relied on your approval for the parks and the pools and the summer camp. So if you say it's okay, then we could say it's okay?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as long as, you know, in conjunction with the Department of Health and the Governor's Office, we can do it in the right way and safely. I think the organizers of the race, including myself, will be able to do it efficiently and safely.
Matt, when would the decision be made? How far before the race?
Ultimately, that comes from the Travis Manning Foundation to announce that, but it would be on the Lower South Veterans Advisory Council in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department and the Travis Manning Foundation and the Bucks County Department of Health. We'll look at it appropriately.
And Matt, you spoke to John Grenwright, the Chair of the VAC, about this, and can you give us a little bit of an idea what he's told you about the numbers and what to expect as far as people that would show up for this event?
I think we can do it safely. There's different guidelines that, you know, a 5K isn't one of them. They haven't even addressed that yet. Their Department of Health, the Governor's Office is focused on different data at this time, so nothing that would stop us from doing it currently, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks.
Other than that, we're reviewing the feasibility of opening the Dolphin Swim Club. There is a lot of interest in having it open. We're working closely with the Bucks County Department of Health and American Pools to make sure that it's something that we can do feasibly, financially, safely, and have a sustainable season. We're running all the numbers. We're gonna get back to you at next meeting.
Matt, when would we find out, I guess, from the county as far as the gain or garner their input with regard to the plan that you put forward?
Well, the order to do would be start with the contract with American Pool and make sure that it's financially feasible. If for some reason there's prohibitive factors, then it wouldn't make sense to even submit a plan to the county. So I have a draft right now that I'm working on, and I'm working in conjunction with the American Pools and the Bucks County Department of Health, and if it all comes together, I think it's something that we could do safely. And I'll get back to you with further report for financial stability. Everything's getting really expensive.
Now, Matt, our next meeting's not till July 8th, so you're thinking after that point in time to possibly open, or would you wanna be doing it before that?
I would look towards a date around mid-July, probably closer to like maybe July 18th. Like that's a Saturday. It would get us off on a, yep, that's half a season.
Okay.
50 days of operation from July 18th. We typically operate around 100.
And that would carry you into the end of, I mean, to the first week or second week of September, you were saying, Matt?
Right, we would go through Labor Day weekend, but not full-time. At the end of August, it would be weekends only. And then, you know, till Labor Day.
Okay, all right. Um, I think we've kinda gone through a lot of our questions so far or comments that we wanted to go through. So, I mean, unless the board has some questions that they want answered or whatever, we've kinda given our responses for the meeting, so we have a little bit of downtime.
I have one question, guys. Speaking about the next.
Hey, Matt. Matt? This is Ed Chen.
I think Kim win first, Ed.
All right.
At our next meeting, I guess we plan on being back at the township building again, guys? Or we really haven't talked about it too much?
Well, I think that we were contemplating about coming back, but we're gonna have to be socially distanced and only have an X amount of people in the room. And if anybody that does not feel comfortable as a board member showing up and being present, they would have the option to dial in, and that actually was on a piece. That's a kinda questionnaire. I saw a couple of board members ask that, not our township, but outside of, or in the Bucks County area and outside of the Bucks County area. So some people are still doing or allowing for to be in the building in a physical manner, but also allowing and giving the flexibility for a board member who may be compromised or concerned, that gives them the ability to dial in on a phone or so.
So Joe, after we turn, after we go to green then, are we mandated to hold a public meeting? Or do we have to wait until the Governor's disaster declaration expires?
That's a good question right now. I would tend to believe that we'd be allowed to have the meetings in a face-to-face situation, but of course socially distanced. But we would have to double-check on that perspective as being the Governor's challenged. Still, I think it's in the court system, if that's still in play or not. And that's kind of the reason why we've been doing our declarations also as a township. One, to make sure that we have the ability to collect under COVID if we need reimbursement. So that's something that we're gonna have to further research, but I think that we would be comfortable enough to at least come back into the building and at least be socially distanced. Now, the question is, as far as the number of residents would be allowed into the building, that might be a circumstance that we may need to further kick the can around and get a little more guidance on, because they're gonna have to be separated, of course, six feet and with the mask coming into the building.
Wouldn't we still have to wear a mask?
Yes, ma'am.
During the meeting, correct?
Uh, well, as long as you're socially distanced and as long as you're able to enunciate, I would leave the mask on.
Okay, I think we should wear masks.
Yeah, I'm totally in agreement with that.
Close proximity.
Yep. Well, I'm gonna try to space you out more than six feet, if I can.
Yeah, and how would we do that, especially where you guys actually sit, Joe, too?
Well, I would have the actual, it's a good question. I would have the directors sitting in a separate row, but also to the side and separated at least six to 10 feet. I would have, they would be using some of the space that's either where the, where we, let's say, exit the work, that work area where we come out of, that one room, and just have them line up over there, but six feet apart. It may infringe on that one side of the building where we would have residents sit, but I would have them separated over there.
All right, you know what you're doing, Joe. You let us know what you think.
Okay, I have something to report. I talked to Nate Fox about the Rule 27 conference on the Provco appeal. I talked to him on the way home. He reports that there was a conference today that the zoning hearing board solicitor is taking the lead, that on behalf of the township, he's just observing and reporting to us as in order to minimize costs. There was a motion by the attorney for Provco for a hearing de novo. The request for the hearing de novo was based upon the fact that the zoning hearing board found the witnesses of Wawa not to be credible. The reason the solicitor wrote the opinion for them not to be credible is only the evidentiary hearing body can make credibility determinations. And the ease, one of the easiest ways to win a case is to base it upon credibility. Although I did that once and got overturned on a trash dump because they're way more powerful people than me, you know? But so there's gonna be some motions, hearings, or whatever to determine whether or not there's a hearing de novo. That is in front of the judge. The judge didn't give any indication of how he was going to rule on that. And he'll probably require some briefs. It's unusual for there to be a hearing de novo. And the argument that the board can't make a finding of credibility, it's a gutsy move. And, you know, you never know what a judge is gonna do. Just because other people have found them credible doesn't mean that this board has to find them credible relating to this site. I mean, that's the argument that was made by Tom Panzer, the solicitor for. I mean, that's the argument that was made by Tom Panzer, the solicitor for the zoning hearing board. Well, that's, so that's what happened today.
Thank you, Frank.
Hey, Matt. Matt, how's the money going back to the park? The programs?
We are, um.
There's, I'll take care of that, Matt. Matt, Ed, on that one, we did mention that at our last meeting. And it is there, there's in our collective bargaining agreement, we have to give at least 10 days notice, recall notice, uh, to the individual. The individual has contacted us. The person will start up on July, on July 1st. And that's when, that's when they'll start progressing with the refunds.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I'm getting, getting a lot of calls by it, that's why I'm asking.
Not a problem, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. But just a, a sidelight for the 4th of July parade. Uh, we've sent out a car, postcard telling everybody, mostly our donators, uh, that the parade is not going to occur. Uh, we had to do that because we had to notify the participants and the public and the, uh, donators. That's been done.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
Uh, I have 12 minutes until the actual meeting starts. Does anyone else have anything?
I have a question. Um, I guess this would go out to, um, Brian about any kind of COVID grants that we're going, able to be able to be able to get?
I'm working, uh, I'm in the middle of applying for the FEMA and PMA grant. And then stuff that's not eligible on there, we have to turn into the county. And then they're going to hopefully reimburse us with that.
Out of the money that the county receives, right?
Correct.
COVID money, out of their 109 million?
Something like that, yes.
Is there anything that the police department can get, you know?
Uh, I'm not sure about the police. I know there's been ones out for the fire and EMS.
Right. But I don't, but these are why I ask, because I don't know, um, with keeping the vehicle sanitized, if it would fit under anything as.
All that part was, uh, that's all in our numbers that I'm submitting with FEMA for everything they got for supply-wise. You're welcome.
And Joe? Joe Gallo?
Yes, sir.
Well, that brings up a, a point there. Is there anything, I don't know, is there any update as far as the township's finances and the projections that have been made over the last two months as far as potential losses for the year? And the, uh, the furloughing and laying off of employees? Are those numbers still accurate? Does that, does that forecast and schedule still look to be the, the, the plan that we're going to follow throughout 2020?
It, it seems to be that way, but like I said, the July 15th, once we start seeing, uh, that one quarter coming in specifically more on the EIT and so forth, uh, we should have a better picture probably by the end of July of where we stand. Um, but as far as unemployment numbers, uh, like I said, I, I may have mentioned this in the last meeting, but the numbers right now, uh, according to the, um, at the state level via the county, I believe we have around 3,770 residents that are unemployed in the township. So it's actually kind of gone slightly up.
Okay.
So that would probably have a little bit more impactfulness on your EIT hypothetically. But again, we'll, we'll do a little more research and we'll have a better financial picture come by the end of July. We'll have a better, a better snapshot of what's going on on there. But everything else is, for the most part, is kind of normal. We're doing pretty good on the zoning side, the permit side. So that's looking good. Um, we'll also catch up on the fire marshal side because probably in August, we'll end up bringing back the, the one lady that would be Assistant Ryan. Um, and that should help us with the upswing on invoicing and doing the reconciliation as far as the checks on that side. So we, we should be making some revenue back over there for a short period. Um, as far as that, that, you know, our main impetus is the EIT, the LST, um, and the, uh, the BRT. And actuality, me and Pete today, I sent an email. We selected a test case of maybe 30 potential businesses in the township that we'll be doing selective audits on, um, and, and see what we have as far as BPT and mercantile monies for past years. So we'll try to recoup whatever monies that we can to assist in, uh, the financial condition of the township.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but we had a little, we had a little bit of time to.
We got, we got dead air time, so that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm shocked Mr. Kim doesn't have any more questions. But I'm not talking Pete, I'm talking the other kid.
Well, actually I do now you say.
Same, perfect.
Um. You scared me for a minute there.
You know, I know a lot of us have probably been hearing complaints about the trash company, about Mascaro.
Yes.
You know, what can we really do?
Well, I mean, we, we try, we try to do our best. They're receptive as far as our main contact over there. Um, it does happen, it seems like for some odd reasons, there may be a street that's missed or two streets that are missed in a general vicinity. Um, I, I don't know unless it's, you know, you're kind of riding, you're riding a truck with those individuals. Uh, but there, there have been more circumstances right now in this giving year, again with the yard waste. But again, you know, we have a contract, they have to abide by the contract. And all we could do is run it up the chain of command on their side and complain. And we're not the only township, uh, the other townships, you know, and too many other townships managers are having the same issues right now. So, uh, we try to mitigate it and try, we, we had one individual that called in probably 15 times. The resident called in 15 times, maybe seven times only one day. Um, I made sure to call him back and, uh, he had his thing picked up the very next day and by 10:30 AM. So, you know, case by case basis, we're still, you know, we'll take the input, we'll take the hit if we have to and try to get the resident served.
Now, have we heard besides wasn't the problem their employees weren't able to get to work because of the public transportation, the problems that were have, that were coming on in the city? Have we heard anything since then that that was the problem?
Yeah, there was actually, we put on the website, uh, a quick response that we got from, uh, from them. I mean, they were, it was a combination of the storms, you know, and it's the summer. People are going to have more grass clippings, more debris out there, um, you know? But they, they still got a job to do. Uh, and all we could do is, once we hear a complaint, notify them and, and, and stay on top of them to make sure the resident or the block is taken care of.
But, but have they, have they been saying why?
It was, it was on, it was on our website, uh, that, about a week ago. I think Chris, uh, put something up there, it might have been two weeks ago, actually. There was, they gave, they gave a quick reason, you know, it's dealing with the storms and so forth. But, you know, it is what it is. They, they got, they got to take care of their workload.
Okay.
Do we, uh, have we ever shopped, uh, like, I know Whitetail is a new, uh, a new company out there in the trash removal game. And I know I see the Republic Trucks also. I don't know, have we ever looked into them too to get, give quotes on the contract?
Well, we don't get, it goes, it goes out, we, I mean, we, we purchased, let's say it this way, we purchased for, yeah, through the, i- i- it's basically us, uh, Northampton, Upper South. And at times Warminster's is in the mix for certain attributes of the trash, the trash game. Uh, but that's typically how we do it. And you usually get three to four responses and then a selection is made.
Right. All right, so it always.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is for the chief. I saw a lot of, um, concerns on, you know, social media, but they, a lot of people talking about the fireworks. There was firework sounds. Does that ring a bell? Has there been anything that's been addressed with that to the public?
Well, I can tell you that, uh, the state legislature, for whatever reason, a couple of years ago, legalized a bunch of the C-class fireworks. Um, you can ask our, those officials why they decided to do that.
So you've.
We get a lot of, I'm sorry.
I would assume, correct, you've got a lot.
Yeah, I'd recommend that people, uh, call the non-emergency number, uh, 215-357-134. If they have a complaint, we'll, you know, somebody will go out and investigate it. Um, usually if they can find the house, we'll tell them to knock it off. That's usually our response.
Well, but it, it's legal, but there is, it's, uh, we have a sound ordinance, right? I mean.
Well, you, you can't discharge them, I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but.
Right.
Uh, state losses, you can't, you can't discharge them with 150 feet of an occupied structure, which is practically the whole township. Um, so, uh, yeah, it's.
So they really can't set them off in their.
Depending where it is, yeah, yeah. Um, like I said, we get these calls all the time. Uh, I've been here, I get these calls, uh, yeah, we drive by, we take care of it. And most of the time, a cop car going down the street usually, usually knocks it off.
Well, I have, uh, two minutes until the meeting starts, if anybody wants to take a short break.
We're going to sign back in, right, Ray? Are we going to continue?
Now, I think, I think we're all in on this one continuous loop.
Okay.
Although if you want to mute and get a glass of water or something and come back, we have two minutes. Once everybody gets back, I have 7:30, uh, we'll take a roll call, we could get started. Pete, we're ready to begin.
Go ahead, it's ready.
Okay, Joe?
Okay.
Joe, you're here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Koutzaratus with us? There he is. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Bazi.
Okay, Ms. Cummings? I see her. Sue, can you hear me?
All right, I was, I took pizza pies, I muted myself, I'm sorry. Yes, I.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, Mr. Shannon?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. And Frank, Frank Dillon?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll begin the meeting now. Welcome to the public portion of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors, uh, meeting for June 24th, 2020. Uh, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Just a couple minor things to go over before we begin the, uh, the meeting. Um, the first thing is that tonight's meeting is being held via teleconference. The meeting was appropriately advertised, um, in, on the township's website, Facebook page and in newspaper. There is one amendment that we have to make on the agenda that came out, uh, that was, the most recent agenda that was provided to the public said that we were going to hold an executive session at 6:30 PM and the work session at 7:00 PM. Um, based on further review, there was no reason to hold an executive session. Um, therefore, we had a work session that was recorded and available to the public from 6:45 until approximately 7:28 PM. So there was no executive session for tonight. Although those revisions were posted on the township's website, the most recent, latest agenda that was provided to the public did not have those on them. So for that, we apologize. Uh, the work session of the meeting tonight included several reviews with, uh, department head members. I'll give a brief summation. Uh, first, we spoke and we received an update from our new building code officer and zoning officer, Mike Italia. If you recall, Isaac and Associates was appointed at our last meeting to take over the BCO duties effective upon, uh, Mr. Bartlett's departure. Mr. Italia gave us an update as to, um, updating the permit process. Um, people will be, uh, permitted to apply online for permits, um, beginning immediately. We also received an update on the zoning hearing board, uh, applications, some SADO applications. Uh, the website has been updated. And Mr. Italia plans to meet with tri-state engineers to get a full update on any outstanding issues with tri-state engineers as far as the township goes. After that, we received an update from Mr. McDonald of the, the Director of Public Works regarding a paving contract that will be discussed later in the meeting. And the manager's report, some updates on the paving and some, uh, some additional roads that we're hoping to be able to get paved because of some favorable, um, bid. And also, uh, Mr. McDonald has, uh, um, updated a sewer policy for all the public worker, public works, um, employees that would, that they will abide by on any sewer, uh, callouts. Next, we received an update from, uh, Mr. Smith, um, the fire, the interim fire marshal. Mr. provides us that the food drive is still going strong and that fire inspections are underway. Um, we received an update from Chief Kremel, uh, the chief of police, said manpower is good and, uh, things are running smoothly as far as the police department. We received an update from the township manager regarding some surveillance systems that have been recommended. They'll come up as part of the manager's report. And also the possibility of the next meeting, um, which is scheduled on July 8th, being held at the township meeting, um, since Pennsylvania is, at least this section of Pennsylvania is scheduled to go into the green phase on June 26th. So we'll have a further update on that. Received an update from Mr. Gilbert, the Parks and Recreation Director, um, on park maintenance and cleanliness and so forth, moving forward through the green phase, what Mr. Gilbert's plan is to maintain, um, the bathroom facilities and the facilities at the parks and to keep them sanitized and clean. Also, an update on the feasibility of holding the Travis Mannion 9/11 Heroes Run. We'll receive an update on, uh, that's item number two on tonight's agenda. And also the possibility of the Dolphin Swim Club opening. Um, we'll receive, uh, a, a more detailed um, analysis of that at the next meeting on July 8th. But we're looking at possibly opening up the Dolphin Swim Club on July 18th. Normally, we would have a 100-day season. If we can open it up by July 18th, that would give us a 50-day season, which would be half of a season. So that's welcome news. Um, and last but not least, we received an update from Mr. Dillon, our solicitor, um, and the latest update on the appeal that's been undertaken at the. and the latest update on the appeal that's been undertaken at the Court of Common Pleas in Doylestown on the zoning hearing boards denial of the zoning for the proposed Wawa at Bristol and Brownsville Road. That being said, we can move on now to public comment. Public was invited to comment via email. If there's any public comment, I believe Mr. Gado would have it and he could read it into the record. Mr. Gado? Mr. Gados, are any public comment to be read?
Yes, there's three. I'm sorry. There was a delayed feed in the computer. Sorry. There is three. So the first one is dealing with road conditions on Brownsville Road. And this might be a public, more public works related question. It's from Rocco Falato on Brownsville Road. Good evening. Do I need to go through the township or through the contract or through, or contact the state directly concerning potholes or potholed sections of Brownsville Road between section 2415 through 2425, the cross streets being Manor and Woodland? He's saying several months ago, someone came through and paved the areas on the road. However, they missed several spots behind the berm that the state placed at the end of his drive on 251, 2419 to prevent flooding from a raised road bed. He's saying every time a long, a long trail or a truck goes by, it sounds like a major accident is occurring. Whoever came out would need to return and repave that section again. Also, can a slow hidden drive sign or something similar be placed either by either Pico or by the Pico poles numbered 3028 or 3029 to possibly help reduce speeding trucks? Thank you. Mark, is there, on your side, is there anything or can you contact basically the, the state or PennDOT with regard to this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact PennDOT tomorrow about that. I want to go out and take a look at it first.
Okay.
Now I'll get in touch with him since it is a state.
Yep, and I'll, I'll give you his email so you have the address in question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
The sec, the second one comes from Maureen Gorman on Siles Avenue in Oford. Good morning. I was wondering, what is the status on the Brownsville Road beautification project? What was that scrap? Also, to take a step further, what's happening with the laundromat on Brownsville and Elmwood? It could certainly use some sprucing up. Please advise Public Works that the vegetation on the corner of Summit and Bristol, across from the car wash, needs to be trimmed. It's, it's almost impossible to see what's coming down Bristol if you're trying to make a left on Bristol from Summit. I'd hate to see someone get hurt. So Mark can answer the part or Mark could take, or Public Works can take care of the vegetation question or the issue. We'll take care of that. As far as the streetscape, the streetscape grant has not been scrapped. It's actually been extended. And barring anything dealing with a shut, a state shutdown due to COVID, you should see some nice sidewalk enhancements, hopefully better pedestrian safety in that area. And the ultimate outcome, basically, improve connectivity in that respective area. But I'll, I'll afford to mark also the vegetation component on that. So we'll take care of that.
Joe.
Yes, sir.
Is, regarding that beautification and the traffic there at Brownsville and Elmwood, did we ever iron out the issues that safe highway engineering, Mr. Fiaco had as far as the, the crosswalks and the light and the, the ADA curves and everything at that intersection? Wasn't there some?
There was an issue and I think Joe took it as, took it as far as poss, as he possibly could. Even though they paved over the road and recently done work down there, they weren't willing to do anything with any type of traffic signals or in that area. So they didn't want to absorb any of the cost in that respective area. So unfortunately, it is what it is. It's after the fact.
Wasn't, Joe, wasn't there an issue with the new pedestrian crossing?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of it. And now I'm hopefully not confusing this with another project, but since I came in at the tail end on this one. I believe there was, but I could circle back with Joe Fiaco on that, but I think Joe has done everything that he possibly could on that. We're just gonna have to move forward and do what we have to do. Ben Salem's not willing to do their side of the, of that, of that project. So we're gonna have to take care of the streetscaping and get, and use the grant funds that we have.
So Joe, maybe you could reach out to Joe Fiaco and we could give a little more informed update at the next meeting as far as what's happened with the old shoe store, what happened with United Auto and what's going on with the traffic grant at that intersection. So yeah, more detailed information. Okay, thanks.
Not a problem. Okay, and lastly, the, the last one is Lynn O'Leary. She lives on 809 Mallard Road. I've been here for 25 years. Basically, she's saying she's concerned about the bull field next to her house, specifically the parking situation. When practice or games occur, our street is inundated with cars and trucks parked all over the place on both sides of the street. Some people, some people even park right up to overhang, or up to or overhanging on our driveways. She's basically saying there's a bend in the road and it's very dangerous when people are parked on both sides of it. There's barely room for one car to go through that bend and sometimes two cars will meet up face to face and then up in a standoff. Last spring, she references that a school bus tried to come through the bend and when the game was going on and got stuck there for about a good six, seven minutes. She's asking what can be done to rectify this potentially dangerous parking situation? And I would, I would let the chief talk on this.
Well, I would recommend that if she calls the non-emergency number two one five three five seven one two three four as these incidents occur and are in progress. So we can have an officer go out and investigate and document any complaints. I can say it's not a real high accident area. So it might just be more of a nuisance complaint than an actual safety problem. But if there's an issue of parking, we can obviously go out there and cite cars if they're parked illegally.
Okay. And, and that's all, that's all we had on the, for the three questions.
Thank you, Joe. After the public portion, item number one on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains five separate items. I'll go through them one by one. Item 1A is the approval of the minutes for June 10th, 2020. Item 1B, approval of the accounts payable, June 24th, 2020. Item 1C, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, June 24th, 2020. Item 1D, approval of escrow release number one, in the amount of $100,975.60 for Watts Restoration Company Incorporated's project at 1704 Busselton Pike, Feasterville, PA. And item 1E, approval of escrow release number four, in the amount of $15,036.95 for Toner Homes project at 403 West County Line Road, Feasterville, PA. Is there a motion to, to accept the, and pass the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion. And Shannon?
Motion's been made by Mr. Shannon. Second?
I'll second that, Susan Cummings.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings. We'll do roll call vote as we've customarily been doing in these teleconference meetings and go down the line alphabetically. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus? Did anybody hear Kim?
I, I apologize, guys. I was muted.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy? Yes. So motion to approve the consent agenda passes with a vote of 5-0. Next up is item two. Item two involves the Veterans Advisory Council, the VAC, in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department's seeking a permission, which is a yearly thing, to use Russell Elliott Memorial Park for the annual Travis Mannion 5K run in September. At this point, I'll defer to Mr. Gilbert to give us an update on the latest with that project. Mr. Gilbert?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I, I realize I'm getting a much better audio connection for everyone when I don't have my video on. So if you don't mind, I'll just do this via audio.
No problem.
Item agenda number two is contingent upon if this will be feasible with the guidelines set forth by the governor's office come September 12th, the date of request. I, I, we are not gonna jump the gun between now and September 12th in the way of unsafely gathering people. We understand that this is still in the green phase and our request will be tentative and contingent upon us doing it safely. With that being said, there is a second option that the Travis Mannion Foundation may be able to host this race virtually. And it would be like you log your own time and just send it to the website, which all goes to the same great cause. My request this evening is the use of the park and the neighboring streets on September 12th with registration and pre-registration, starting at 7:00 AM. The race will begin at 9:00 AM. We expect to conclude post-race activities at 12:00 PM. And we would also like to authorize the no parking on the streets. And also, the race will be closed during the hours of 9:00 AM at race start to 10:00 AM as the race concludes.
The park will be closed to me? Matt?
The, the park would be for the use of the race only. We would not allow any other activities to take place during that time.
Does the board have any?
So we're looking for, we're looking for a motion to that effect, but I think we also discussed that the ultimate decision as to whether the race occurred would be left up to Mr., we'd authorize him to make that decision.
Right. Does the board have any questions before we make a motion?
Matt, do you want to get the list of streets?
I just was looking at my list, yes. In conjunction with this motion, Mr. Chair, I would also like to include the approval of the closure and no parking signs posted on the following streets in the Buck Ridge Farms neighborhood adjacent to Russell Elliott Memorial Park. That would be Mallard Road, Nancy, Sandpiper, Woodcock, Pheasant, Quail, Eastview, Westview, Waycross, and Midway. Just during the duration of the race, the no parking will be posted the evening before.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
It's only a 5K race. It's not gonna take more than an hour.
Okay, so the motion would be then, from the board, we would need a motion to grant approval to the Parks and Recreation and the Lower Southampton VAC for permission to close the aforementioned roads by Mr. Gilbert and to use Russell Elliott Park in the morning of September 12th, 2020 for the Travis Mannion 5K based on the final approval of Mr. Gilbert. Is that correct? Frank? Mr. Dillon, does that sound correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone that would be willing to make that motion?
As an old veteran, I'll make that motion.
That's Mr. Shannon, I would presume.
Yes, it is.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Old Veteran Shannon?
Yes.
And a slightly younger veteran, but nonetheless, old Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So the motion to grant approval to the VAC and Parks and Recreation conditioned upon Mr. Gilbert's final okay is granted with a vote of 5-0. Thank you all. Next up is the manager's report. Mr. Gado?
Sure. Okay. As far as the American Red Cross, they're having a lot of problems finding places that are willing to allow, to have the, the blood drives. So we stepped up to the plate and we're gonna try to do a couple, a couple visitations with them in the course of this year. We're gonna be having it on June 26th from 10:00 to 4:00 PM in the District Court Building, not at the Township Administration Building, but in the District Court Building. So we'll be doing that on the 26th.
That's the day after, day after tomorrow?
Yes, sir. It's Friday.
Yep, great. Okay.
And then as far as what we're, what we're gonna do, as far as the RDA police grant, the police were nice enough to obtain three price quotes. So we're gonna be procuring two surveillance systems, one for PlayWiki and one for Dolphin. Basically, we're looking to award, award video technologies in the amount of $13,481. We did get the three quotes. One was from Excel Communications Worldwide. And then the, the last one was Practical Tech Consulting. Both, both of those two were higher in price in comparison to video technologies at $13,481. So we would look for a motion to approve that tonight and to sign off on any, any type of documents we would need to approve.
Okay, Mr. Gado has asked for a motion to approve granting the contractual award to Video Technologies in a sum of $13,480 for two surveillance systems, one for PlayWiki and one for Dolphin. Is there a motion to grant, to award that to Video Technologies?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion. Kim Kutsaratus?
Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Kutsaratus. Second?
Seconded, Shannon.
It's been seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy? Yes. So the motion to award that to Video Technologies in the amount of $13,481 passes with a vote of 5-0. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Gado?
Next item on the manager's report is the awarding for the 2020 road paving program. We received three bids on Penn bid. The base bid, the base bid range was $353,994.30 to $556,513.13. So pending a PennDOT assigning a project number, since there are liquid fuel dollars involved as well as other dollars, we would need their approval on that, but we would also need an awarding approval as well as an approval to sign off on a contract awarding the bid, the base bid of $353,994.30 to James D. Morrissey, most likely inclusive with the alternative, the alternative bid spec that they included at $422,452.95.
Okay, and Mr. Gado, if you could, I think Mr. McDonald advised us before the meeting that this bid is low to a point where we're able to do some more paving. Is that correct?
Yeah, there most likely will be a pending change order that would be coming before the board at a later point in time. We would be adding two additional streets onto this due to the, the good pricing that we received.
Okay.
So.
So the motion then would be to award the paving contract to James D. Morrissey in the amount of $422,000?
$452.95.
422, 452.95?
Yes, sir.
To James D. Morrissey. Okay, is there a motion to award that contract to Morrissey?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Cummings has made the motion. The second?
I'll second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Ms. Kaplan. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy? Yes. Motion to award the contract to Morrissey passes with a vote of 5-0. Thank you.
All right. Last, one of the other, other last items on the manager's report is the sanitation rebates. That ended on June 19th. We did find some late-minute stragglers this week that we allowed for. There were Um, there were maybe like five or six that came in who was sick and so forth. Um, so we tried to accommodate them as best as we can. So for this year, for 2020, we issued 886 rebates, which converts into $44,300 in rebates given back to our residents. So we've, we kind of extended, it'll even pass the, the June 19th extension date. So just to assist a few residents that had some hard luck. Um, and lastly, the other part is, as we go into the, uh, our July meeting, um, and go into the green phase, the township will most likely end up having our township meetings inside the administration building. We may be directing the flow going one way. So there is no kind of cross-contamination. People come in one way, leave another way. So we don't have multiple doors going in and out and people coming in. Um, we will basically have the, give the opportunity for the board to be present if they would like. Um, of course, wearing masks and socially distanced. If a board member, uh, does not feel safe or secure, they also have the opportunity to dial in if they would do, if they would like to do so. Um, as far as the residents, we would need social distancing in place as well as masks in place. Um, so there might be a little bit of an accommodation issue as far as their, the room capacity. We will also have our directors set aside in a, in a social distance manner, um, as best as we can. And, uh, with masks as, as, as properly as we can. And so that would be coming up at the next, uh, July 8th meeting.
So Joe, if that, just as an aside on that, if that is to occur, is it possible for us when we advertise that on a website, the Facebook page and in the, in the newspaper to put a, a, a number limit on the amount of, um, the public that would be permitted to come in so that they know that before they show up?
Yeah, actually what we'll do probably most likely either Thursday or Friday is sit down with Ryan, the emergency coordinator, management coordinator and have him, we might sketch out the room so that we actually have a, a head count and so that we know what we can put capacity wise in that room, um, and, and take it from there. So we'll probably do it like either Thursday or Friday this week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sir.
Mr. Gatto, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but that, um, the 886, is that, um, more or less than perhaps last year?
It's sure. It's slightly less than last year. Last year we were in the, the high 900s. So I, I, and that was part of the reason why we kept the, we extended it a little bit further and why we even did a little bit this week. We allowed for it as stragglers came in. So yeah, it is slightly lo- lower than the previous year.
So did we have, um, the, the reason for the date that we gave as the deadline? Was there a reason for that date?
Would, well, the, we, it would have ended at the end of May. It would have ended basically at the end of May. Uh, and due to the fact of COVID being present, we extended it to June 19th. But traditionally it's been the end of May is when we ended the, the program.
See, it I, I don't know because it's a little slightly, well, it's lower. Is there any way we could possibly give people more time?
Well, this has been running from February. Um,
Okay.
So I mean, it's, it's, it's a fair duration of time has passed. Um, and that's why we kind of extend it and then publicize in it, uh, in our manager's report and wherever we can. And Denise does an excellent job, uh, as far as the, uh, anybody showing up at the counter or calling in, asking, uh, do you want to come in for your rebate? And she's been very accommodating with that. So I think we got what we're going to get in all honesty.
Okay.
And if somebody has a medical condition and it's a week from now, you know, I, I, I'm certainly not going to have an issue with it as long as it's within the budget.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
No problem.
Thanks.
That's, that's all we have for today.
All right, Mr. Gatto, thank you very much, uh, report. Um, next up would be supervisor's comments. Uh, Ms. Cummings?
Okay, um, well, we talked a lot about the green phase this evening and it got me thinking about, um, seeing a lot of comments on, um, social media and reading a lot of articles about the businesses um, moving to the green phase. And it seems that while the businesses are really excited to move to the green phase, I think reading some of the, uh, the comments and some articles that they are feeling very anxious um, about moving to this, you know, during this time, um, they, we want to remind everybody as we move to green that we still have to remember to follow um, the guidance that's been given to us about remembering to wear our masks, to social distance. And most all, we need to exercise our patience, our kindness, our compassion at these businesses as they navigate during these new phase, during this new phase and this new time, um, set amongst us. Everybody out there, stay safe and, um, have a happy forthcoming.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Uh, Kim, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, um, I'd like to say a few words in regards to the passing of Howard Linder. Not everybody knows Howard, but a lot of people do. Howard was a fixture in the Shamity community. Starting as a resident, a teacher, a coach, an administrator, and also an advocate for any type of topic he felt worthy. My memories of Howard was how connected he could get with the students that he taught, such as myself. Then again, later in life as a customer of mine and, and even years later as a, uh, as an advocate for the kids and the taxpayers. When myself and Sue Cummings sat on the, uh, the Shamity School Board. Howard was always willing for a fight, always willing to help anybody out. I'm sure he will be greatly missed by anybody who know him. I'm sure he will have an eternal memory. God bless his family. And, uh, on top of that, I also want to give thanks to Mr. Mark McDonald today. On, uh, on social media, it probably about three minutes after seven, I had noticed that a resident had an issue with a storm sewer over on Meadowbrook. Probably about 10 minutes after three, I had called Mark up. And probably about quarter after three, Mark was over there putting a cone on top of the storm sewer to keep everybody safe. And I know he's going to be out there tomorrow with his guys to, uh, to work on it. So really, Mark, you know, my, uh, my, my, you know, gratitude to you for working so quick with that. I appreciate you answering your phone. Job well done, bud.
Thank you, sir.
And that's it for me, Ray.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Uh, sure. Uh, I would like to welcome Michael Italia to zoning. Um, look forward to working with him. And also I have some library news. The library's curbside pickup of library holds on Monday from Thursday, 10 to 1. Tuesdays and Thursdays, additional hours from four to seven, Saturday, 10 to 1. And there's more information on the Lower South Hampton Library.org page. Summer Request Program is for all ages. That runs June 20th to August 22nd, and that is entirely online. Just go to Feasterville Library Facebook page for more information. There is the summer book bag of 10 books during summer for children reading. Librarians will assist in book choices and just go to Feasterville Library Facebook page for more information on that. And there are always virtual programs for children and adults as well. And my, my condolences go to Mr. Lindler's family. Um, he also was very supportive of me and, um, I appreciate his help that, and his friendship. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Uh, Mr. Shannon?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm here. Uh, I'd like to say the great things for Mark. Uh, from everything I understand, he's been responding in a really professional manner. And I just want to say thank you, Mark. Um, I'm looking forward to, to meet Mike Italia. I haven't been around. Um, but I, I understand that things are getting squared away and that's terrific. And I look forward to meeting him. Uh, Ryan, thank you for the food drive. It's certainly needed in most cases. I know assumption particularly is, is, uh, needs some additional stuff uh, for those that can't afford and those don't have. And I want to thank Peter for getting me on this. I had some problems with my computer and, uh, he put me on as a voice. So you're probably, everybody's probably better off not to see me anyway. So that's a good thing. Um, the contract for the roads looks really good. And thank you, uh, Joe, for getting that kind of a contract for us. That's terrific. And I guess that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Um, I won't, I won't belabor the point too much, but the wonderful feedback we're getting from, on both Mr. Italia and Mr. McDonald is encouraging. Two quality employees and two great folks. And we're really glad to have both of you aboard. Um, along with the condolences to Mr. Lindler's family. He was my class dean, uh, back at the day. That was what was called the principal. And somehow he got me through high school. I don't know how, but God bless him. Um, he was a great man. He's going to be sorely missed. Um, two other things I'd like to thank Matt Gilbert and John Gren. John's the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Council for all of their effort in trying to pull off the Travis Mannion 9/11 Heroes Run. We're hopeful that can be pulled off and thank both of those great men for their diligence and, uh, and feasibility, trying to make this feasible for the residents. Um, and the last but not least is, um, we've been lucky enough to get 10 orders for the Hometown Heroes banners. Um, Ms. Lynn has placed those orders. We're awaiting back proofs from our vendor. Once those proofs are, are, um, uh, approved by each one of the 10 families, then those banners will be ordered and we hope to have them up as soon as possible. We're looking probably to hang them on Street Road going eastbound from, uh, Busselton Pike down towards Central Avenue. So 10 more banners should be up as soon as we get them. Other than that, I have nothing. Wish everyone a happy July 4th. And, uh, if there's no other business, we would need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
That's happened. I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Ms. Kaplan, second?
I'll second that.
Ed Shannon, second.
Uh, okay. There's a second there from someone. I think it was Ed, but it may have been Sue, but nonetheless there was a second. Um, and we'll do a roll call. Uh, Ms. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, yes. Uh, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us and we'll see you on July 8th.
All right. Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care.
All right.
Have a great one.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.